My name is Karsten Walker and I'm an educator in the Alpine School District. Just finishing up teaching 26 years. I taught business and marketing, career and technical education classes, and I helped students get internships and do work-based learning experiences. Cole and I are running for the same seat in the Mountain View Cluster. We've known each other for a long time. I have a master's in economics and entrepreneurship education. Throughout my career, I focused on having businesses come in and work with students on DECA and FBLA projects. And I would love to...I've been teaching economics and capitalism in our schools, and I would love to help the district get that this is what we need. We need to foster capitalism, entrepreneurship, economic education, because kids are getting some wrong information sometimes. There's some biases about socialism or other ideas. And I think it's really important that we have an active educator on the school district board. So I'm going to retire, so I have time to do it. Because I have enough years in and just want to give back to the community and be a part of the Alpine School District Board.
Good evening. My name is Lana Nelson, and I am running for Alpine School Board, District 4, which is the Lompeet Cluster, which includes the cities of Highland, Alpine, Cedar Hills, and part of American Fork. I have been a longtime resident of Utah. I was born and raised here. I've been in Cedar Hills area for about 20 years. I'm a mom of three young kids, 15, 10, and five. And I am really interested in seeing their education move forward. And I am a working businesswoman. I graduated from Brigham Young University with a degree in public relations. In public relations, we listen to people. We listen to their opinions. We gather information from them before we make decisions. We get data before we move forward with any type of proposal. I have a...I literally have a degree in listening. I went to school for four years for it, and I have three kids. And as a mom, we all know, we listen to our children. As a board member, my intention and my goal would be to listen to the parents. They want to be involved. They want to be heard. I'm willing to listen to them, as well as the teachers. And I look forward to receiving your vote, and I look forward to getting to know many of you more. And if you want to know my stand, I have a Facebook page as well, and flyers outside. Thanks.
Thank you. All of our candidates here tonight have set up booths. They have set up booths just outside to the left. And so they'll be here this evening. Following this session, they will stay and field any questions and get to know you as you get to know them better. Thank you. Let me also remind you of our rules of engagement. We will ask that you hold your applause only for two occasions: after their opening remarks and after their closing remarks. That's at the beginning and the end. And then I'll take just a minute after our policy chair, Stephen Wright, and we'll commence the second session. Thank you.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, thank you, and again, thank you to all the candidates. And for the Alpine School District Board candidates, find another word besides "cluster." Just...easy change, okay. All right. We will introduce our candidates for the second portion here. First seated on the left of...my left of the stage, or stage right, is Amelia Powers Gardner. She's our incumbent. And next to her is Stephen Diamond. And then next to Stephen is Renee Tribe. And we will turn the time over to Curtis to start this portion.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate your time tonight. It's good to see you, Renee Tribe. It's nice to meet you. I'm sorry, this is our first occasion to do so. Stephen, I know we met just as you walked in this evening, so not much more of an advantage. And Commissioner Powers Gardner, thank you for joining us. I know the kind of schedule that you're keeping these several weeks, and we appreciate you spending an evening with us. Let me remind you that many of our questions came from our business community. As a business chamber, you would expect that that would have a bit of a slant. But I do have some questions that will be different than our previous session. And so all of these came from our community, and we appreciate their participation in helping us structure that. We'll begin with a two-minute introduction of yourselves, and this time, we're going to go left to right, starting with Renee Tribe.
Thank you. And thank you, delegates, for being here. I'm not going to stand up, because I don't think it's going to make much of a difference. But I'm...thank you for the chamber for hosting this event. And right about now, I'm wishing that I would have taken high school debate as an elective. But I did not. I want to let you know how I got here, and that is on Friday, May 4th... Sorry, March 4th was the deadline for candidates to file in Utah County. And the day before, which was the third Thursday, I discovered that there was nobody challenging the incumbent for seat A. And it just didn't sit right with me. This is a participatory government. And I just let it settle, and I just thought, you know what? Why not me? I can step up. I can do this. I've had business experience. I'm currently serving on our Linden Planning Commission. I have served in the PTA, the PTO. I've raised five children. I've done whatever I could to help volunteer in our community to make it a better place. But one of the business experiences that I want to highlight right now that's very preparatory for serving as commissioner was I saw a need in Utah County that our young people weren't getting served with the opportunity to play lacrosse. And it was just a sport that was important to our family. All my children had played. And I stepped in, and I started a league. And I started that with a business partner, because I didn't have all the knowledge that I needed. So I needed his officiating and coaching expertise. But it was a wonderful experience to grow that sport, offer leagues, tournaments, and playing opportunities for families. But it allowed me to work with players, coaches, officials, municipalities, and vendors, and work all those...all the feedback that I received from them and make it a successful league that was a real joy for me to build and flourish.
Steve Diamond. Thank you. My name is Steve Diamond. I'm...I've been in this community since I was 10. I'm now 60, so that kind of informs you. I'm a private citizen who solves problems. And you haven't seen them, because I've been quiet about it. But I want to share with you...I believe, like John F. Kennedy said, in low taxes and in spurring the economy. Just like Reagan said, mourning in America. What did he do? He talked about the low taxes, how we could have a supply-side economics, and it would work for everyone. And Donald Trump did the same thing. Lower your taxes, okay? So we're doing just the opposite. We're raising your taxes here in Utah County. So the question is, is can your taxes be paid for another way? So if we start asking that question, it might be. Let me tell you a couple of things that I did for our community. I was able to get rid of two crack houses. In our city forum, they had a crack house that... I said, "What do you guys need that you don't currently have?" And they said, "We need license plates, and we need photos of the cars." So I organized my neighborhood, and we stayed on that street. And we photographed every single car that came to that crack house, and we took names and we took numbers. Well, within about two weeks, the crack house was gone. We had another crack house that was in an apartment complex. So I helped find a developer before I was a developer, and we got him to buy that. And he turned it into a phenomenal apartment complex, gutted the whole thing, changed it out, gone, okay? Then we had a traffic problem. And I saved you $40,000. You can go to my website and check it out. One second to spare.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Amelia Powers Gardner. I grew up here in Utah County. I actually attended several classes here at this university. I grew up in Provo, went to Tiju High School, and then I went to Weaver State University, where I received a degree in automotive technology from the College of Applied Science and Technology and Engineering. After that, I went to go work for Caterpillar, the big yellow tractor company. And I worked for Caterpillar for 12 years. I lived in three states and two countries. And I worked mostly in service engineering. So I worked in strategy and failure trends. Through that process, through the engineering process, I learned a couple of things. Number one, my time at the factory, I learned that if you look at processes, you can make things more efficient, and you can gain a lot of steam by sticking to processes and making them efficient. Number two, I also learned that you can solve problems in a myriad of ways. And just because something has been tried once, or just because something has always been done that way, doesn't mean it's the best way to do something, or that something won't work. So I came back home to Utah after being gone for 10 years, because I wanted to raise my family here. There's a problem in that the world has discovered that Utah County is the best place to live and raise a family, which means that a lot of the world is moving here. But the majority of our growth is our children. And so I got involved in county government because I want my children to be able to stay here in Utah County, and I want their children to be able to stay here in Utah County. I served as our county clerk auditor for two and a half years, and I've been in this position for 11 months. In that time, I have championed innovation and efficiency, so that as our county grows, we don't have to grow the size of our government. I'm committed to continuing to do that for the next four years. This is a pivotal time in our history. We are growing at a rapid rate, and we need a problem solver and someone who can innovate, so that we can not have to expand government as our population grows. Thank you.
Thank you for those introductions and for respecting the time clock. I noted that this is already a group receiving higher marks. We appreciate that. Commissioner Powers Gardner, you mentioned something about innovation, and that is a great segue to our first question. And preserving business independence, encouraging competition, and freedom to innovate are standard bearers of importance and paramount to a thriving economy. Of course, as a Chamber of Commerce, we believe that those should maintain intact and protected. There was a bill presented during our legislative session. Commissioner Powers Gardner, you were able to speak a little bit to this in...during that session. It's HB 60, HB 60, which would have prevented employers from making their own decisions on how to deal with employees' immunization status. Just because there may not be all of you that's familiar with the number, that was the bill. Our chamber opposed that. Starting with Amelia Powers Gardner, tell me, did you support or oppose that bill, and why?
Yeah, I absolutely supported HB 60. HB 60 would have banned vaccine passports. I think that your medical conditions and your medical history are not the business of the people who you purchase products from, and they're not the business of your employer. If we as a government are going to be in the business of telling people that they cannot discriminate, then we need to be in the business of telling people they cannot discriminate. I myself have a blood clotting disorder, and that is not the business of any place that I buy my groceries or any place that I choose to be employed.
Thank you. Same question to Stephen Diamond.
I'm always...the quote that comes is, "Let people govern themselves," right? To teach correct principles and let people govern themselves. The problem is, is that so much of the government wants us to do things. So I'm totally against bans or any of that kind of... And I don't like SB 54 for the same reason. I have the right to associate, as a Republican, with other Republicans, and it shouldn't be determined by legislature of who I can associate with. So I'm against any of those things.
Thank you. Renee Tribe, are you in favor or against the vaccine passport amendment?
Yeah, I supported the ban. And in addition to having it ban passports or the vaccines, it was also going to allow so much data collection, and I didn't want to see that happen.
Why?
We all need our privacy. It's important. And we know that, you know, privacy is a new currency, and that needs to be protected.
What would you do as county commissioner, Stephen Diamond, to protect our privacy and those rights associated?
Well, the number-one thing is...I talk about this all the time, but the Fujio Penney says, "Mind your own...mind your business." And it means, basically, that as Americans, we take care of one another, but we don't force things on each other. And the way that you protect it is by...somebody wanted to ban fire pits, because somebody looked over the fence and saw the other children doing marshmallows. And I said, "Well, you're actually doing voyeurism looking over the fence." So you broke the law. So anyway, that's what I think.
Thank you. Take me a minute to get that image out of my head. Sue me off my game. But I do appreciate your comments about bans. It is a bit of an irony, isn't it? To have a mandate, to mandate no more mandates.
Go figure.
Thank you for your responses. But the role of business is a key element, right, to a thriving economy, and certainly to the county. Commissioner Powers Gardner, what have you done while in your seat to help promote a thriving business environment in this county?
I think one of the most important things we can do to promote a thriving business environment is to get out of the way. And I think that oftentimes, government tries to come in and meddle. One of the things that I've done is try to open up property rights for individuals living in the county, so that they can open their own businesses. I actually worked to change a zoning law, so that people who own land can open a business on their own property.
Thank you for that. Renee Tribe, what experience do you have in a business setting that you feel your skills and attributes would add to a thriving economy? Tell us a little bit about your ideas for promoting business growth in Utah Valley.
Well, having been a business owner, I'm definitely pro-small business. And so much comes about when people are able to execute on their own idea, create a business, employ people, and just, again, you know, not regulating and letting people govern their business, grow it. And that is what is very rewarding, and it gives people that self-reliance component of their lives.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Is it possible, Steve Diamond, to have little to no regulation? In what instances would regulation be appropriate?
There is...regulations are appropriate in having it where, just like I said, you know, if somebody's violating my privacy by looking over my fence or coming into my house, I have to have some regulation to stop them and have the right to be able to have privacy. Okay? But when it doesn't work is when I filed for this office, and it was $690 to file, where the clerk has to pay 40 bucks. "Excuse me, I'm just wondering," you know? And they say, "It's because you make more money." And I'm going, "Well, that's something like 10 times the rate," you know? And they do the same thing all over the thing. You have a hairdresser that has to spend 2,000...I'm sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Powers Gardner, what do you make of the thriving economy now? Is it too hot? And how would you temper the growth that we're experiencing? Of course, we have unprecedented inflation. There's not a lot that a county commissioner can do. But what can you do to help solve some of our local pains that we're feeling?
Yeah, we are feeling some pains, but you ask, you know, what should we do to temper it? You talk to any business owner, and the number-one problem they have is that they can't hire enough people. And so stopping growth is really not the answer. Besides that, 60-plus percent of our growth comes from within the county. Utah County had 20,000 babies last year. I'm not about to get into your bedroom and tell you to stop having babies. I think what we need to do is find a better way to manage the growth, so that our businesses can flourish, and our children can stay here, and so can their children.
I agree. It sounds wonderful, isn't it? More important, to be ideologically pure or to solve problems? Stephen?
I already lived in a place that banned growth. It was San Luis Obispo, California, and they banned it for 10 years. It was devastating to the city. They had one...they had a tree list that you could plant trees, and they had one tree on it, okay? They were a bunch of communists, you know? Here in simple. And so I hate that kind of stuff, you know? Why don't you leave me alone, you know? We have the right to...we are Americans, because we have that thought in our minds, that we have the right to our own destination.
Thank you. So Renee, is it more important to administer county government or to make county government more efficient?
It's definitely a combination. But when we are being more efficient, we're saving money and resources. And in that return, we should be lowering taxes and really looking at how to continue to leverage technology to make it efficient and continue to do that. There's definitely lots of software and apps and things that we could utilize to do that. But for us to be creating those things, no. But for us to be leveraging what already exists to utilize, to make efficiency, absolutely.
In what ways would you strike a balance to promote innovation, then, in your role as county commissioner? What could you make more efficient? In what ways could innovation solve our problems?
Well, we're doing some of that. I believe that, you know, when the people go online to pay fees, that's a pretty streamlined process. And if they have...can take care of it themselves online, I think that's really helpful, and that reduces costs as well. The administration of the county is somewhat extensive, and there's lots of different departments. And, you know, can we look at maybe combining or crossing over some of the functionality between employees?
Commissioner Powers Gardner, is there room for innovation in our county government?
Yeah, absolutely. A lot of the services that we provide are still very manual. A lot of our processes haven't been updated in literally 20 years. And it makes no sense to me that somebody living in Saratoga Springs has to pack their kids up, drive 45 minutes, find a parking spot, stand in line, fill out a piece of paper. Then we pay someone benefits, wages, and retirement, so that they can retype that information. We should be able to use an online portal in a secure way to get you the information you need without having to clog our roads and make our skies more cloudy.
Okay. Thank you for that. Stephen, do you have a comment about that?
Absolutely. So innovation is key when you look at it. That's what I do in my business. I change houses...I mean, I create houses into homes. We take and we innovate by taking homes and multifamily complexes that nobody wants. And we gut them and turn them into phenomenal townhomes and condominiums, okay? So that people can have affordable housing. That's what I do, okay? So I'm going to bring that same thing to the county government. I can not only innovate, but I've shown in my own personal way that doing that... Sorry for the time.
Thank you. Can we innovate our way out of our housing gap that we have right now? Let's stay with you, Stephen.
So when you're looking at how people build, for example, you're... People say, "You can't come into this place, because I was already here first." And that's ridiculous. Every city grows on the basis of putting together the... The number-one thing that makes a good city is transportation. Just look at San Diego. You can get anywhere you want there. Go two hours further, what do you know about LA? You stop, 30 minutes later, you see, "Welcome to LA," and you are parked on the freeway. That is two examples of innovation. One planned for the arteries, the other one didn't. And now you permanently have that situation.
Thank you. It's easy to vilify California for our problems. I've heard all too often, now that I'm here, let's shut the gate behind me.
Exactly.
But how do you propose, you know, Renee, to manage growth with stewardship as a county commissioner?
Stewardship of money, I would definitely think, is what we're talking about here. You know, as we look at all the offerings that government wants to do for us, we need to go back to the core. And just because government can do something, doesn't mean they should be doing it. And perhaps it's making sure that we're really looking deep into some of the services or the offerings that we do have to county, and maybe they're not relevant anymore.
Okay. Stephen, what do you think?
Well, to go to innovation again is that you look at... So they buy brand-new cars, cost $50,000. I buy a year-old car, it cost me 25. There's some innovation for you. There's...it's only $30,000 miles difference, and I just cut the...I just cut your budget in half on acquiring cars. Do the same thing with water, every single thing that is. But you have to be able to have the mindset that gives you the ability to see it. If you can't see it, you can't do it. And people...a lot of people in government can't see those innovations.
So we have unprecedented growth ahead, Amelia Powers Gardner. You know it better than anyone. You have, I would say, stood up a strong argument for why innovation does solve some of our potential issues with growth. But what have you yet have undone as a commissioner in the seat you now sit?
Yeah, I think two of the most important things that we need to do for growth is we need to look at transportation and water. Traditionally, we have not, as a county, done much with water. We've left that to the cities. But water doesn't respect city boundaries. It crosses city lines. Our aquifers cross more than one city, and so do our rivers. We need to work together in conjunction with the mayors and with the cities to better manage our water resources as we grow. The other one is transportation. We don't have enough east-west corridors. We need to do a better job of getting the transportation that we need in our county today.
Thank you. Do you envision a bridge in your lifetime spanning from Provo to, say, Saratoga Springs?
Yeah, I think in my lifetime, there will be a bridge across the lake. We need more of every type of housing. We don't just need townhouses and condos. We need single-family homes as well. As millennials grow and have families, we need more yards, more houses with yards. The best place to do that is on the west side of the lake. We don't have enough east-west thoroughfares now. We need to find more ways, and the lake would be a good one, a good place to do that.
Stephen, what do you think?
Well, I envision...
Now that we know your age.
I would envision an absolutely phenomenal expansion bridge that doesn't block any of the things. You don't cut the lake in half, but you create a crown that when people come from the point of the mountain, they see this beautiful expansion bridge, and they want to see that like they do in Key West or any other place that has these phenomenal bridges. And it doesn't block, it enhances the lake. It creates that. And then you have people that want to come to this to visit, to see those things. It would be phenomenal.
Renee, what are your thoughts?
Yes, I think a bridge would be extremely helpful and something that I would see in my lifetime. And, you know, if you've ever tried to go paddy or crossing out to the west, it's rush hour, it's highly congested. So having another opportunity...and yeah, there's going to be more growth over there on the west side, for sure. And they want to be able to get around more efficiently.
In your perspective, how far should development go with regards to our Utah Lake resource?
Well, if you're referring to the Utah Lake project, I don't know that we've seen a full proof of concept on that at this point. Would I love to see the lake be more recreation-friendly? Absolutely. I look at that lake every day, as most of you do too. And it would be nice to look at that lake and know that it's right there. That could be more useful for families and gatherings and recreation.
Stephen, how would that be possible? How would you contribute?
I have a full vision that I've been working on for over 30 years. I worked to get it so that the title was...so that the state actually has title. And you know what they said to me after we got title and everybody got title? "Now we can't do anything." I said, "You scumbags." You know? This whole time that I was trying to get this done, so that we could have venues and everything, and beautiful places that people could enjoy, and tourists would come, and then we get to keep all the venues. And they pay for our services, and the taxes are a limit. then we get to keep all the venues and they pay for our services and the taxes are eliminated. I want to see your taxes gone. I want the tourists to come in and pay for your services. That's the way to do it. So I'm a little passionate.
Commissioner Powers-Gardner, what do you think? You've been involved in so many conversations about the lake, and Renee's correct. The Utah Lake Restoration Project has been a very important and, in many ways, controversial topic in the last six, eight weeks. But what is your perspective about an expanded vision of development more than just a bridge that spans the lake?
Having grown up in Provo, I always went swimming at Deer Creek because Utah Lake was not suitable. It needs to be suitable for our children. I think that humans destroy Utah Lake. It's our responsibility, we have stewardship, to clean it up. And I would support a cleanup effort, but it needs to be sustainable, it needs to be environmentally friendly, and it needs to remain open to the public. If I can find a plan that does all those three things and doesn't cause us to raise taxes, I would seriously consider that.
Would you agree, Stephen?
I've already put out a plan of how to be able to clean up the lake. There's two of them. If you want to look it up, LG Sonic, the king of the Netherlands, just to prove that for his whole kingdom. Write that down and go look it up. The next one is called Martin Ecosystems. Both of those clean the lake and they also put the flora back on the bottom of the lake so that we can have a clear lake. They're very inexpensive to do and they're not going to require a lot for us to change it.
Thank you. The carp might have something to say about that.
Oh, we're taking care of them, so.
Renee, are you in favor of or against the private use of Bridleville Falls? And why?
I would like to see it stay public. It's just been... It's such a focal point of Provo Canyon, and it should be available to everybody. And I don't see that making it private would be something that would be advantageous. And, you know, we love our open spaces and we want to be able to access those.
Do you have a different opinion, Stephen?
I would like to see that public, but I would also like to see the gondola go up again. Okay? When I was a kid, we'd go up there and we had danced and it was a blast. The kids in this valley have no place to go to do anything, and so they end up going up to Salt Lake to those venues that I don't think that they're awesome. I think that we could have venues that would be phenomenal for our youth, and I would love to see them built here. So it's going to be fun.
I'm not sure I agree with your statement about there's nothing to do in Utah Valley.
I didn't say that. Well, maybe I did.
I was actually going to say, we have a lot of great things. I love Utah County.
I do too, but...
We have a lot of great things here to do in the valley.
Commissioner Powers-Gardner, tell us three things that a young person can do right here in our valley.
Okay, that's gonna be...
Yeah, absolutely. One is Rolie's Red Barn down in Santa Quin is fantastic.
That's a fun place.
That's a really fun place. Thanksgiving point, I mean, it's great for families, it's great for teens, it's great for adults.
Two?
And I would say downtown Provo. The downtown Provo corridor has some great shopping, it's got great activities, it's got beautiful scenery, and you can even have a serene walk around the garden there at the City Center Temple.
Thank you. Renee, tell us three things that attract our young people and maybe perhaps those that are moving to Utah about Utah Valley and why they would live, work, learn, and play in our county.
One of those is, I believe, the Murdoch Trail. It's super expansive. People love to bike on it, run on it. People drive over to it so they can just do their long triathlon or you can do your 100 triathlons in a day, in 100 in a row if you want, if you're the Iron Cowboy. And the second one that I think is really fun is Harvey Park. Ever been to Harvey Park in Cedarville?
Cedarville.
Yes. And yeah, downtown Provo, I think, is a lot of fun. Lot of restaurants popping up, it's got a really fun vibe.
Stephen, you don't strike me as an Iron Cowboy type of trainer.
Oh, man.
But can I give you the chance to redeem yourself?
Oh, absolutely. I feel like I stepped in that one, didn't I? So anyway, the thing is, I believe that there's tons of things to do in this county. That's not what I was saying. What I'm saying is I would like to see far more of the beautiful things. I remember as a kid to be able to go and enjoy Saratoga Springs. We had an awesome place to be able to go swimming. There were five pools there, it was fun. Okay? That's what I was talking about. I've hiked almost every year of my life here. Okay? I know this backwards and forwards, Rock Canyon, I run it. There's lots of things to do, that's why I stayed here. Okay? But I see a vision where we can have far more things that they used to have back in the day. Fairies that go across the lake and all those things and enjoy the lake again like they used to. That's what I'm talking about. Restore it back again, okay?
Well done. Mission accomplished.
Thank you very much. I repeat myself. There you go.
Let's pivot to an elephant in the room with regards to our last legislative session. If you followed that, you would have noted that things were clipping along as we entered the last day. A particular bill dealing with transgender youth participation in sports had several subs and was passed. Let's begin with Commissioner Powers-Gardner. Were you in favor of or against the veto override by Governor Cox?
The veto by Governor Cox or the override? I was in favor...
The veto override?
Yeah, I was in favor of the override. I myself was an athlete in high school. I played varsity soccer. And anytime that we would scrimmage with the boys' team, I was goalkeeper and I would come away with bruises. I mean, I would literally have bruises for weeks from having blocked the balls from the boys' team. Our girls' sports is a gateway for leadership for the public sector and for the boardrooms. We have to protect our girls. We need to protect our leadership pipeline.
Thank you. Stephen, hold your applause, please. Stephen?
Absolutely in agreement, and I don't think that anybody should be able to force their way into anybody else's bathroom or anything like that. Okay? We don't do force. If you want to have separate bathrooms, fine. I don't care. You don't go and say, "Just because I can't compete here or that..." And you don't... Okay, just because I say I'm a tree, okay, and I start trying to change myself to be it, does not change me from being human. Okay? This is unacceptable of what they're doing. And I don't care where you come from, women are women and you, they have the right to have their privacy, and men are men and they also have the right to privacy, and that's where I stand on that.
Thank you.
Leave it alone.
Renee Tribe?
Yeah, I was definitely in favor of the override as well. And, you know, anybody that wants to come in with, you know, a male, turn into and come to compete in women's sport and best girls just because they can, I think that's ridiculous. And I don't want to see this perpetuated, and it's sad because we've kind of fallen into this manipulation.
In what ways, Renee, do you feel like we can lead out in Utah County this narrative? Truly, truly, the narrative of being a principle-based maybe example for the rest of the state and the rest of the nation? How could you help promote some of the principles and values that you just espoused that make us unique? Do you feel like it's an appropriate role that we play in Utah Valley?
Yes, absolutely. And we've already been doing it. We have so many out-of-state folks coming and moving here because they have been restricted in their freedoms and they're leaving their state and they've come here to Utah. And they're so glad to take their mask off, especially in Utah County, and they could live. And we're supporting personal freedoms and we're continuing, and we should continue and will continue to fight for those personal freedoms.
Thank you. So Stephen, having, you know, being a private business owner, what do you think the role of government is? Do we have an overreach in Utah County or have we struck a good balance? And if we're not in balance, how would you change it?
There's a lot of overreaches. I told you, like a realtor, I have to renew my realtor's license. I have to have a license to do my business. And I understand the regulation side of it, but I also understand that it shouldn't be overregulated by creating huge fees. I was telling you about the hairdresser. They have to spend 2,000 hours. A financial planner has to spend 20 hours. Tell me if that's balanced. Just saying. It's ridiculous.
Thank you. Commissioner Powers-Gardner, the last group I was able to ask a question regarding our form of government. You went through that. In fact, you're in your position because of the resignation of a former commissioner. Tell us a little bit about the challenges and opportunities that are presented with a shift in our form of government, or are you in favor of moving to a county mayor or more of a boardroom model as opposed to a three-county commissioner model?
Yeah, I don't think that we... I don't think our only choices are a mayor or a three-county commissioner model. I respect that people don't want us to look like Salt Lake County. I certainly don't want their tax rate. That's why I live in Utah County. And, but I think that we could have more hands at the table. Many hands make light work. We have nearly a million people in this county and we will be the largest county soon. I sit on a dozen boards and there's no way I can simultaneously be in all those meetings. I think five county commissioners would get us the resources we need and would more than pay for the cost of that.
You are in favor then of moving beyond a three-county commissioner model. Stephen Diamond?
Well, I believe in small government, so smaller the better, you know? And if I can eliminate even my position, eventually I'd like that.
I'll take that. Renee?
There you go. Hey, I still have time.
I know. I'm moderating the debate.
I wanted to say more.
We want to get to your summary mark.
No worries.
If we're able to create and keep efficiency, then we could stay at a three-member commission. And, you know, if we're utilizing and leveraging technology to make things more efficient, then yeah, I think a three-member board or commission would be just fine.
You think that can support the growth we're going to see in the next 20, 30 years? Or do you think we're going to have to pivot?
It depends, and it's up to the people too. They can put that out there again and we can certainly bring that up.
Stephen, curious to know, and again, this is just a quick answer, maybe even in the spirit of who you prefer in one answer only.
Okay.
Which US senator are you more aligned with or support most?
Mike Lee.
Okay. Renee Tribe? Mike Lee or Senator Rami?
Mike Lee.
Amelia Powers-Gardner?
Senator Lee is the best senator we've ever had.
Thank you. What... Why would you feel that Senator Lee would receive your vote? Is there a particular principle? In fact, would you name one from each of you about why you lean the way you do in that vote? Commissioner Powers-Gardner?
Yeah, Senator Lee has done a couple of things. Well, not only does he always stand on principle, but he also works across the aisle when he agrees with people on the other side. I've seen him co-sponsor legislation with Dick Durbin from Illinois and Bernie Sanders when he agrees with them, and I've seen him vote against the Republicans when he disagrees with them. But at that same time, he always stands on his principle, and being able to do both simultaneously is incredibly rare. I think he's... Him and Mary Goldwater are probably the two best US senators we've ever had.
Steve, could you speak to attributes more than an individual?
Yeah, please. Very easily. So this is a personal experience with Mike Lee. I always ask each of the people that I'm asking, I says, "Tell me of the time when you had a really difficult moral decision that you had to do, had to decide, and tell me the process that you went about of how to... How you came to the conclusion that you had the right answer." So Mike Lee said, "Nobody has ever asked me that, ever, in the history of running." And I said, "Well, I'd like an answer." And he says, "I can't answer it now, but will you give me two weeks to think on it?" And I said, "Sure." Two weeks later, he sent me a letter and he said, "This is what I had to do." Says, "I'd appreciate it if you don't share it with anybody, but this..."
Luckily, you're out of time.
Which I never have, but he took some of my time, so I get it. But I...
Renee, save us, please.
No, wait. I have to finish it. So he said, "But thank you." That is something that is cherished by me. And I said, "And thank you because I know that you will always make the right decision."
Thank you for sharing sincerely. Renee, what are some of the attributes that would land your vote to Senator Lee?
Well, whenever he speaks and he's explaining perhaps a bill or legislation, he's always good at educating and bringing it back to the Constitution, and I appreciate that about him because he truly is a pretty good mastermind at the Constitution and he shares that with... And we need that as a public to be more reminded on how the Constitution interacts in decision-making and policy and all the legislation that goes on there.
Thank you. We'll give you each a minute to catch your breath, and Stephen, your minute is up.
Hey!
Would you give us your summation of your final thoughts and speak to our group here?
Absolutely.
By the way, I need to commend everyone for showing a tremendous amount of civility, a proper decorum. This is one of the reasons why I'm so proud to be living in this county. Thank you all for your participation. And Stephen, go ahead. You've got one minute.
You guys, in high school, I had two nicknames. One was Gleam by my coach, and he said because I looked like I'm in a toothpaste commercial because I smile so much. And then the other was Eternal Smile, okay? It's in my blood, you guys. I'm positive. I have B-positive blood, so this is what it is. I love doing good things. I love this county. I have given my blood to you, literally gallons worth to this community. And I love this community and I've done personally to make your lives better. Now, as a citizen, I did that. Now I want to be a citizen servant and show you that I can make that bright city on a hill that I see Utah County as, as the one who is the heart and also can be the jewel of Utah. And I love this county and I love you all. God bless you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the Steve Diamond roast hour over now?
That's what it felt like, isn't it?
He made his own bed.
I need 10 more seconds. So, you know, our rights come from God and they don't come from government, and we are all born with a divine spark and free will. And that free will has been somewhat compromised and hampered, and we've all felt it. And we've been noticing that government and corporations, but specifically government, hasn't had our best interest in mind. And we're definitely living in an unprecedented time in history. I feel it and you feel it, and that's one of the reasons you're here as a delegate. That's one of the reasons I'm here as a candidate. And my focus as a commissioner will be right here in Utah County. I'm focused on being here and not diverted by other interests or committees or special interests. I will protect our personal freedoms. I'll protect your money with fiscal conservatism. I love Utah County. I have drive and I have passion and I love liberty. I love the delegate system because you get to vet candidates and really get a look at the core of who we are as your candidate and who's going to represent you. I might be the underdog purely because of name recognition and because maybe I haven't inundated your email inbox. And I may seem like an underdog because I'm not seeking endorsements from high-powered political people. But delegates, what I am seeking is your endorsement because I will be the bulldog to champion your freedoms above anything else. Thank you.
Commissioner Powers-Gardner, I know you're not used to this, but you have the last.
Say. I'm asking for your vote, not because I will tell you what I will do, but because you can see what I have done and what I will continue to do. I am the only elected official who went up to the Capitol and favored to ban vaccine passports. I worked with our legislature to ensure that this legislative session, we had more roads funding that came to Utah County than has come to Utah County in a decade. I'm sick of seeing Davis County with half our population continually receiving more money from the state than we do. We pay into that and we deserve it back. I have worked really well with our legislature. I have taken the time to get to know our federal delegation so that when Congress says we need a roads project, we're not just giving them six from Salt Lake County and zero from Utah County because that's what happened in 2020. It is time that Utah County gets the attention that we deserve. We are the conservative icon for the state and it's time that we started leading conservative policies for the state of Utah. Thank you.